Morning Bill.
Morning Paul.
Hey, before we get started, when you're done and you have a chance, give Charlie Sweetland a call.
Okay, well, I did call him because I wanted to fill him in on that news that I told you about, but I'll give him a call.
Yeah, he was gonna call you back and I told him, I just talked to him, I said, well, don't bother because he has a meeting in a couple of minutes, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, he's out, I think he's driving truck today, but give him a call, he'll try to answer when he can.
Okay, did he tell you the news that I gave you?
He did not, no, we didn't bring that up. I had a list of stuff I had to hit him with and I wanted to get through it, so I didn't go over that.
Okay, all right, I'll go over with him when I call him.
Okay.
All right, sir, where are you?
London.
Oh my goodness.
I'll turn my camera on. I look like I just woke up because I did.
What time is it over there?
Uh, two o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay. You're allowed, I don't know how you keep up on any sort of a schedule for yourself.
No, I have a schedule.
All right, sir.
All right.
Casey, I'm going over a few things with him, but.
All right, I'll let you go, I just wanted to let you know that before we get started.
I appreciate it, Paul.
Good morning. Did you spend all day at the transfer station though?
I did, all weekend.
Oh, you did Saturday too, huh?
Oh, yeah. All right, I've got nine o'clock. Our board is here, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm gonna vary a little bit or make a suggestion so we don't hold up our town clerk and assistant town clerk that I'll entertain a motion to move that item, which is under new business, item E, website committee presentation, to move that up on the agenda so we can hear from them at the right now.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, saying aye, aye?
Aye. I'm actually really looking forward to this. This has been needed for a long time.
Well, I saw us text Mike to let him know when we were ready for him, I said now.
We're on top of it.
Yeah, because he just started our call. On. He started a call. All right, well.
Okay, want to do the.
You want us to move on and.
Want to hear from the public, we'll do your briefing then, will it go on?
That sounds.
I will.
Can we entertain that motion?
Yeah, I moved, I moved that we we cover this item after the selectmen's briefing.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, our union contract is Karen can attest to, I checked with her last week. We have yet to receive it from the state.
I did email her, I have not heard back yet.
Okay.
I'm a pee bomber.
This, yeah, this has been a problem in the past as well.
Uh, Trunko House. As I mentioned to you at our last meeting, we've got a bid from Nutmeg to re, for removal of the oil tanks and the boiler of eighty-five hundred. And I'm still, I did get communication finally back. Rick Zillig's been very busy, but I expect to receive his scope of services, which he told me is not going to exceed a thousand dollars, I expect to get that. I was hoping to have it today, but, so that's something that we're, we'll carry for our next agenda, but I think we ought to get going on that. Our Nolton Memorial Hall, our gutters. You'd had some questions, Catherine and I had forwarded you the contract proposal, did you have any more questions with that or?
Uh, no, I had asked, what you're considering, what you're doing, what you have put forth is to refurbish the gutters.
Correct, it's a restoration of them.
And they're guaranteed, he said, for how long? I forgot.
Minimum of one year.
All right, and the cost again?
Approximately thirty-five hundred dollars.
So they're good for a year?
They're, well, I think they're gonna be good, better than that, that thirty-five also includes putting the new weather caps on all of them. That'll, that'll be a new installation, but they'll be adapted to the existing. One of the problems that we had when we got prices from the several other vendors that ranged from ten thousand to eleven was they could not replace the seven inch gutters that are up there. So aesthetically, it would look different. And some concerns were about dripping and stuff like that, so I think the best bet is just to go with this and, and I have checked the references on that company and they've, they've got a good reputation, stand behind their work.
Okay.
I'm confident to proceed with that.
All right, thank you.
Um, Nolton Memorial Hall, ADA repairs on the front door, as you know, we approved up to twenty thousand dollars with ARPA funds. But our Public Works did some due diligence, I had Alex, a stiller electrician, go over, take a look at it because I had concerns about the pricing that we got from the vendor that, that we got our initial quote from and what Alex discovered was one of the reasons the second door wasn't open, apparently Ralph had had the motor disconnected.
Why? Do we know?
My understanding was he was concerned that second door was not opening or closing quick enough and it was letting heat out of the building. Well, we researched that a little further and the reason that door was not opening or closing properly was the hinges were frozen.
Oh my God, okay.
They were probably as old as the building.
Well, I'm not surprised.
So anyway, we've ordered in six new hinges. The door, the motor has been reconnected, both doors are working, we'll have complete ADA compliance with that now. And the new hinges will be installed sometime this week, as soon as our crew can get to it, the hinges are in already, so I've asked them to go ahead and paint those doors, get the new hinges on. And I think that whole thing is gonna come in for somewhere around less than a thousand dollars.
Good, nice job.
So that worked out well. Appreciate it.
So this is something you said Joe, Joe determined? Uh, are we at a.
Joe determined?
No, no, the electrician.
Alex is still about the motor.
But about the hinges that was Joe?
And, and then, no, it was Casey and Jordan.
Oh, excellent, okay, thank you, I just wanted to see if Casey was involved.
Casey and Jordan, and I think Nick also worked on that, so.
Well, good, good work.
All right, um, transfer station, our issuing of the new stickers started last Wednesday and to date between at the station, and we did it all, all weekend and this office, we have issued about a thousand new, new stickers already. Very well received. Had a couple of complaints, which, you know, out of the high traffic we had, they were anticipated, but it went well. One of the interesting things, I know our board here will be interested in, we turned away less than a handful of non-residents, but we counted about eighteen turnarounds. People, people came down, up and saw what we were doing and left. So right there, that kind of tells you something.
Yeah, that tells a story.
Yeah, so all in all, that went well. And things.
It'll be interesting, Bill, it'll be interesting looking at how our I don't want to say tipping fees, but how many loads we're actually going to have over the next few months as, as we go on and see if that's reduced.
It will be, I'm, I'm gonna assume, I'm hoping it's, it's appreciable, but I'm gonna assume it's gotta show some sort of a a decrease.
Exactly.
As well as better organized, so.
Good.
Right, I'm gonna move on then, and do you want to reissue your motion, Catherine, to have our discussion going to item E under new business website?
I already, I already had made the motion to have it happen after your selectmen's update, so we don't need another motion.
Committee, we are ready for you then.
Okay, sorry, I hope it wasn't just me that was tardy and made you a longer whole thing around. So Sherri, Karen and I have been doing some background research on the town moving to a new website. I think there's a lot of reasons why people have feel that the current website leaves a lot to be desired. And so to sort of start that process, what we've been doing is looking at several neighboring municipalities as well as just towns that, that have really nice websites and provide a lot of functionality online and trying to get a sense of who they use as a vendor. And overwhelmingly, towns in Connecticut use Civic Plus. So we have had some glimmered discussions just to try to understand what the process looks like, what's the timeframe, what, what do they need from us, what, what was the overall project scope involved? And really, do we actually stand to gain a significant amount of functionality or, or is it even worth it? So we've, we've kind of done that background research and, and feel comfortable that I think we have the baseline of, of information to think critically about moving forward and, and actually asking questions and determining if our website makes sense to, to move away from. But in looking at the. But in looking at the process and the town's guidelines, really the next step for us would be to go through the procurement process and issue an RFP. So I think, and I'll stop talking in a second, but I think that the goal for us this morning was to answer any preliminary questions you have. We haven't gone that far down the road, obviously. But ultimately to get a blessing that we could then move forward with drafting and issuing an RFP so that the town could formally consider proposals based upon the cost and, and the policy that the town has. There, there's no way around us having to go through the proposal process, so we figured that was a good step. In, in your assessment, how are we comparing to other towns?
Have you listed the functionality?
Oh, hold on, we have one question first.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Catherine, I just said, he did the research with other towns. I just wanted to know how we compared. We.
Well, Karen, Karen's end of this is to tell you where we are currently at with our website and how that's working for us.
Good.
Okay.
And what we're lacking.
Okay, I don't want to steal your thunder. Thank you.
Catherine, you had a question?
Uh, she's going to be covering what we're lacking, which is going to give me a better idea of the functionality that we need, so thank you.
Okay, so you want me to go ahead? Okay, so first off, we all, all know that it's definitely not user friendly. Um, our, our public is finding it difficult to find the materials that they're looking for, or it's redundant and, and there's too much clutter on, on, on the front page. When you, if you want to bring it up on your phone, which a lot of people do if they're out there, it's not the same and, and trying to find the information is, is much harder to do. From my perspective of putting information onto the website, yes, I've learned a lot. Um, but there's still a lot of things that are not easy to put onto the website, so I'm having to contact Kyle at Madcom and he ends up doing it. So the easiness to put on, it is just not there, which lacks then for department heads or different departments to be able to maintain their own page with whatever the content that they would like. Which I think should be an ultimate goal that each department should be able to maintain the information on their page. I definitely think that it's not geared towards municipalities, just based on looking at other towns and, and the setups, especially one, the ones that are using Civic Plus. It's not ADA compliant, which I'm not really sure what that means, but it has, obviously has to do with the American disabilities.
Yeah, it has to do with font, the font, the size, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, could you, okay, so you were talking over each other just a little bit there. So what was not ADA compliant, the font?
The website itself. Couldn't change fonts. The website.
Couldn't change, couldn't change fonts.
So, so there's.
I know, I was asking why, that's all.
Yeah, so the people that have vision impairments, when they use a computer, they have programs and screen readers and.
As soon as, as soon as, as soon as you told me that you couldn't change the font, I understood. I just couldn't hear the thing about not being able to change the font. Okay. So.
Well, then that's all I have.
Oh, but back to the question, how do we compare it with other towns? I mean.
Oh, ours?
Yeah.
Oh, our, our website, current website is terrible.
Okay.
I've looked at, I've looked at.
All the time from people.
Yeah, I've looked at at least ten other websites over the course of the last few years and we aren't even close. It's, this website is not intuitive at all. It's uh, good or bad to hear that it's also difficult to maintain. We should be able to maintain a lot of it ourselves. Um, it's just doesn't compare. And that's based on my experience in IT.
Sure, can you add?
Um. I, I just feel very strongly about making this change. I think that you know, you get what you're paying for. So looking at something that we started out with years back and it's definitely time to transition to something. You look at the other small towns and even, even like Canterbury and, and Sterling and some of these others and there are actually very few that have websites as poor as ours. And it's a big deal now. Technology is a big deal. This is, this is something that you really have to invest in. Um, and in terms of serving the residents. It's, it's not something that they experience like the transfer station, but it's still, it ups our service level with them immeasurably. Um, so.
Well, it is one of our primary communication mechanisms.
Absolutely, exactly, yeah. And there, there's, there's a lot of flexibility to what we're looking at is something that meets our needs, but is affordable for us. So we're looking at different levels when we look at the different companies, what they can provide, what, what are, what our intention for you? Uh, what we would like to do is basically come up with a comparison of what comes in with the RFPs and we will um, come up with, you know, spreadsheet that compares the functionality, you know, what you get. Um, so we can see where we are and where we could be. And so we're trying to do the research, the, the, the work for you guys so that you can make a relatively easy decision.
So that's where you're going to need to list the functionality that you're interested in. Or we're interested in, so that when you do get those RFPs, you can measure each of the applicants exactly on the functionality that we're looking for. So we need a pretty complete list to make sure that we get everything covered.
Okay.
Do any of you have any sort of an idea of a range of costs? On, on an average that this vendor charges or what it encompasses or?
Well, I think that's actually the, the, the model that we currently have, if I understand correctly, is we, we have a website and purchase the product and then Madcom is a third party vendor that helps us maintain the website, but they're not actually the person who provides the website. Now, everywhere else, you actually engage in a contract with the vendor and then they provide ongoing support. So as they roll out updates, nowadays the updates are primarily security based. But if they roll out an upgrade or an update or you need a problem, you're going to the folks that actually provided the website rather than a third party. So there's a much greater incentive for them to maintain and help you because you're working with their product rather than some third party.
You also have, you also have a bigger voice when it comes to any changes you want made to their product. Because you're working directly with them. You're not going through party.
From what we can tell and what I've seen, the, the, the cost comes in largely with how much you want to bring over from your current website. So if you want to bring thousands of documents from your current website to the new website, that is where costs tend to be high. So things that you either, if you don't have a lot on the current website or, or staff is willing to bring stuff over internally, that's where you can really get the cost down. So you could be paying ten or fifteen thousand or a hundred thousand. But the product itself isn't extremely pricey. I think from what we have seen. Most of what we have are historic agendas and minutes, many, many, many years. I, we were looking at our last week and it does seem like we can do some bulk downloads of documents from our current website. Which means we can do that ahead of time and we can upload those internally to the new website, which will save uh, significant costs, assuming we can pull it off. So that, that is part of what we'll try to tease out once we actually start comparing apples to apples.
Okay.
That's good.
Before you do the RFP, you'll, you'll do a scope?
Yes.
Okay, and so we can take a look at it and whatever?
Yes, yeah, we'll put together a draft and, and, and let it get circulated so you can provide comments.
Mike, you mentioned security and I know on our agenda, although I don't see Loretta with us from the conservation, but there've been a couple of breaches. I know they had one recently. Would this sort of thing compliment, compliment that or give us any more?
Uh, this wouldn't, wouldn't have any interface with virtual meetings, but nowadays websites that are following trends with security take measures so that automated bots is the term can basically scrub your website for personal information. So if somebody scans as an attachment to a document, uh, something that has a phone number or an email address, they will take measures to protect that from basically just showing up in a Google search, for example, so that you don't have that personal information so easily accessible. There are things that do with an increased functionality to make Zoom links harder to access, for sure. Right now, we're kind of limited. But this wouldn't be precisely what they would address, but, but there would be things we could do to make it better.
Yeah, in terms of the, uh, the issue with people coming into our Zoom meetings and putting things up that we don't want up because they shouldn't. Uh, I think that's a separate issue. When all is said and done, it's got a separate process that you'd have to follow. And we might find that there's actually a protocol we can put in place, not, not a mechanical protocol, but a, a protocol for the meeting. So that's something I think would be a good separate discussion.
Okay, anything else folks? Do you have a timeline when you think we could get a, a scope and go ahead?
I said, how's next week?
That'd be good.
Yeah, we'll.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
We'll get it together for you to review ASAP and we, we're going to try to pull. We're gonna, we're gonna pull examples from other places. We're not drafting this blindly.
Recreating this.
So well, it'll hopefully be pretty close to what we're trying to do based upon fact that we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel, but we'll get it ASAP.
Is there a town that jumps out to you that is presently what you'd call state of the art or ahead of the curve on this thing?
I, not, not to me, because I think it really depends on the goal and towns that you know, depending on how you use the website and the number of departments and whether you you know, what functionality, I think there are some towns that have a lot of functionality, but it's actually too much. And it's, it's becomes hard to actually follow what you're actually going for. But I, I, I mean, I would say eighty percent of the towns that, that you're going to look at are all using the same vendor, which is Civic Plus.
And you can tell, like, you know. Open up their website at the very bottom. It'll tell you who it's powered by.
The Chronicle printed this little article about Wyndham's improved website will be live soon. It's on September ninth. And they're very excited because they went over to the Civic Plus. So that, that's definitely one of the ones that we're looking at.
One of their latest and greatest?
Yeah, there's, there are a number of towns that are using that, so that's definitely going to be one of the ones we're looking at.
Okay. Well, thank you for your effort.
I have, I actually have another question for another piece. The, um, so we put TextMyGov in. And TextMyGov works two ways and we only implemented, although we have the capability of implementing the second way, but we only implemented the first and that was that texts could be sent out from the town to, you know, different groups. Um, but the other part of the functionality was that if people who texted, uh, let's just say, I always use this, this example, dog license. If they were to text dog license and, and the office wasn't open or whatever, um, it would automatically take them to the place on the website wherever the information is about dog licenses and how to get them in Ashford. So the, the, one, one of the reasons I kind of held off before about doing a new website was because of that, because you don't want to go through that experience twice, do that effort twice. And our website wasn't conducive to doing that, even the way, you know, the way we have things organized. But that self-serve function of TextMyGov is a very valuable function and it's used in other towns. And I'd like to see that come along after a new website. But certainly keeping it in mind that it's going to need to be able to support that. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Roger, anything, any question? Well, thank you folks and we'll look forward to the follow-up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We just wanted your blessing to continue. Okay.
Oh, yes. Let us know if there's anything else we can do to help.
Uh, Tallins, Wellington.
That's off, good one.
All right, we will move back to our regular agenda, which is item five under and that is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of October second.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded and all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, aye? Unanimous, thank you folks. Next item is to hear from boards, commissions and committees. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business, status of the Ash, Ash, uh, Ashford uh, after school children program. Um, I had discussions with our superintendent on Friday just to see how things are going. And we're averaging eighteen students per day. And she's telling me that everything's going smooth. The new staff that we put on board uh, which are town employees are adapting very well and so far there's no, been no hiccups, so things so far are going well and we'll hope that they continue that way.
So this is being funded right now. Uh, but we don't have what are our ideas about funding it in the future? We only have funding for this year.
The State Board of Ed has a funding source that Cindy Ford is applying to for next year's funding.
Okay, good, thank you.
And that's what we're looking for. We have identified a couple of towns which we've done before. Stafford Springs, I'm told is one hundred percent financed. And there are several other towns, so that's what we're encouraged that we're going to be able to use as a resource. Hey, item B, consider funding options relating to the initiation of the Ashford School Roof. It's still premature for that. The building committee, although have not seen a schedule of their upcoming meetings, have all got the cost proposals in from the vendors. And they are scrutinizing and doing their diligence on that. As I mentioned that at our last meeting, I was somewhat shocked at the variance in the proposals on the cost. So I know I've seen a couple of written comments of a couple of the members, they as well want to scrutinize and try to identify why there's such a difference. Uh, I mean, one is, it's, it's a hundred percent more than the lowest. So. So that, that's work in progress, as we said. Um, update on transfer station upgrades. I think I addressed that earlier. Younger leaning seems to be going very well. Item D, approve renewal agreement with the town of Bolton for provisions of billing official services. We had discussed this briefly at our last meeting and I forwarded both of you copies of the proposal. Uh, or I believe it was in your package last time. Does the board care to move on this?
Yeah, I think we need to move on.
My, my thought.
So. I did get a question, actually I got a question from my husband on this one. It's, um, and I didn't go back to look at the contract afterwards, I should have. The, uh, but the hours that, um, the, uh, building official services are supposed to be available. Was that the, you know, where where they can be reached in a timely fashion or whatever? Do we have anything related to that?
The, the, the contract, the new contract is verbatim on the last several contracts we've had with them. Off the top of my head, I don't remember Catherine, the specific hours. I know they cover on, on Tuesdays. Uh, is when normally everybody's in the office down there. Uh, availability. Um, I know anytime I've had, I, I have immediate contact with, with either Bolton office or their enforcement officer here electronically or whatever, and it's one of the, we do have that office staff down there. I, I have got no complaints and, and I've, I've had great experience with the professionalism that I've received from from what they do for us. My, my thought was because it is more than what we budgeted for by about six thousand dollars, if I recall. But that, at the next Board of Finance meeting, I will give them a heads up that that's a line item that we're going to be over on. But that we will make a recommendation on making adjustments from other line items at the appropriate time. And I, and I believe we have, we're going to have that, that buffer in our salary uh, line items, making adjustments. If we're convinced, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve it.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Signify by aye, aye? Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, I had a meeting and I forward you the uh, information that um, we got and, and, and what our last meeting about was with the EDC chairman and um, I'm not sure Mike is a vice chairman or whatever, but I know he's been, Mike Anick's been active in this. But uh, I was impressed on, they did some tweaking. Um, and I'd like to get this notice in our next uh, citizen, if we're comfortable with it. Um, and I've, I've given the citizen a heads up. I don't know if they have room to do the entire application form, but I'd like to get rolling on this.
I wouldn't, oh, sorry. Uh, I agree. Uh, I wouldn't put the application form in the citizen. I would put some kind of a write-up and then a link to the application form out on the website.
I, I got a feeling that that's, I, I have a feeling that's what's going to uh, will be limited by room available in the citizen anyway to, to have three pages.
Yeah, it's, it's too long a thing to put in the citizen.
We will do an article and announcement and to proceed with the documentation that we, the drafts that we looked at.
Yep.
Okay.
Do you need, uh, do you need a motion on that? Are you okay?
Couldn't hurt.
I'll, I'll make the motion uh, that we uh, 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 accept and put this and prove.
This is the assistance program.
Yes, very good.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you, Catherine. All right.
I think, I think you got it. That's a all in favor kind of thing?
It is. Everybody in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Going on to new business, uh, boards and commissions. Uh, we have no recommendations at this time. Is that correct, Chris?
Right, we have nothing right now.
Okay. Item B, tax refunds. None?
I have none.
Okay. Item C, discussion, re, uh, senior center, ASCO, Town of Ashford relationships. As I'd mentioned in your last meeting, I have, have had a couple of meetings with the new president, uh, Sandy Labrec. And uh, also the secretary came in at the same time, uh, Mary Shinowski. And discussing how we can better coordinate things and basically get along down there. I did get a call uh, from Sandy the end of last week that she's had commitments come up today that she can't make it. She's asked to be carried over to our next daytime meeting. And, and I said we would do that.
I would expect we'd also see the vice chair.
Absolutely agree wholeheartedly. All right, um, website committee, we did that already. Item F, conservation commission.
Discuss.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Roger. Item D, discuss and or act on request for permission to hunt on the Kailua property. I don't think I have to ask you folks, but we did get a letter from the same gentleman that approached us last year.
Yeah.
I know my feelings haven't changed, but uh, I'll open the floor for discussion.
He's not, he's not even a, it's downtown property. He's not a town resident. If we open it up to him, we have to kind of open it up to everybody and that's just not what we're gonna do, so.
I, I'm, I'm not in favor of opening it up to anybody.
There we go.
Uh, I think it's been abused when we have allowed people to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's more or less unable to control from our end of it.
Yeah.
For enforcement or whatever. So I would entertain a, a motion to uh, advise this gentleman that we do not allow uh, hunting on that property.
I'll move it. So moved.
Roger's making a motion?
Uh, I'm seconded.
Um, the, any more discussion on this?
Uh, I'm in, in agreement with the two of you. I think that um, uh, it is, uh, if we open it up to one, we have to open it up to everyone. Not only that, there was a significant cleanup that had to be done when hunting was done on there before we owned it. You know, after we took it over.
Yep.
So, uh, we, we actually saw it physically what was left. So.
All right, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. Uh, website committee, we've already heard from conservation commission presentation regarding interruption of Zoom meetings and I don't believe Loretta's with us.
So there's, there's a couple of things, like I can speak to it a little bit. I did work with Mike to try and figure out how, you know, how we could manage the meetings ourselves, so to speak, so that, or the chair could. But to do it, and I don't want to overcomplicate it, to do it, you actually, let's put, let's say, this is how it's done today. Today, um, the uh, I'm trying to remember the name, Tyke sets up meetings and they do it so that it's basically automated, so that when the meeting, you know, gets opened, it's can start. And uh, the other kind of meeting they set up are the ones that they monitor for us. And those are, you know, town meetings, that kind of thing. Some of our meetings where we know we have to go into executive session. Because um, what happens is it's, it's basically the person who sets up the meeting who has authority to knock people out of the meeting if, if they need to. So in order to, to do this, we, we'd have to approach it in a way that would make it so that there's a shared ID that's shared by the chairs and they would have to set up the meetings, which I don't think is a viable solution. Because we have, you know, we need to go through a process so that not every, so that when meetings get set up on, out there, they're set up right. So if you can imagine all of the chairs of the various committees, commissions, boards having to go and create the meeting themselves and a shared ID to do it with a shared password. And the fact that chairs and whatever change over time, you have a bit of a logistical nightmare and a security issue. So I hope that's relatively clear. You can't get around, around it with the version of Zoom we have, and I think that there's another version that's a lot more expensive. And uh, and I don't think that that's gonna be something that's viable either. Zoom set it up this way. So you could, there is a, a manual, there is a procedure, what am I calling, I don't, a, a protocol. If you stop and think about it, that I, and I haven't talked with Mike about this, is that should that happen, if you have a protocol, it's established with all of your boards, commissions, whatever, that when something obscene or inappropriate comes up, everybody goes out of the meeting. Everybody just shut down the meeting. You can then bring the meet, you can bring the meeting back up afterwards, after a period of time. And you won't have that there, but then you have a recording issue. Now, what he did do with the commission uh, conservation commission meeting was Mike went in and he cleansed the meeting where obscene material came up. He, he cut that out. That's why I couldn't see what happened, actually. Um, and so there's not a, there's not an easy way around this of those, uh, in the case of what happened to us, to the conservation commission. Uh, the same thing happened in Wellington and other towns at the same time with different recordings, which was even, this must be some gang or something. Not sure how they managed it.
I, I think.
Now, Roger?
Yeah, I think that, you know, all these people now, you know, the biggest thing now is to go online, interrupt things and kind of try to create content. So that you post it on your website and, and inquiring minds who have to know, you know, will watch this stuff and, and these people ultimately make money off the website. I think, don't see this getting any better. I only see it getting worse as more and more people try to create content. Um, so I don't know really what to.
It's, it, it's a frustrating situation. I know I've had several of our chairman of various boards in that say that they're not interested in getting into the complexities of administering and that sort of thing.
Right.
Most of them, we're lucky to have doing what they do.
Yeah, it's one thing having the authority to do, it's another to have the ability and to manage a meeting and the technology.
I, I didn't personally see what happened with the conservation or what the interruption was. But I was on the meeting when we had that horrible incident last year on the Board of Ed. Um, and it is something that we've got to be cognizant of and keep our eyes open. If there is a legitimate solution that comes up, we're gonna have to prioritize it in some way, but right now, what I, what I'm hearing just sounds way too complicated for us right now. I mean, the alternative.
Right now, and I'm not giving up on trying to figure out if there's another way.
I agree. I mean, I've had a few people say to me, the best way around that is let's just go strictly public meetings again and stop the Zoom. But, you know, there's, there's alternative arguments to that too, so.
Yeah, there are, um, the, you know, we can tell by the number of people who view our meetings. If even people who are not in our meetings or have not attended during the meeting, they're going back and um, they're viewing the meetings. So, uh.
I'd, I'd be interested in those numbers. I wonder if Mike has any idea.
You can see them yourself when you go out there.
When you log in on Facebook.
You can see how many of.
Yeah, you go out to look at a recording. And you can see how many views it's had.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
So.
Right.
Uh, but I am, but I am not in favor of ending online meetings because this has created uh, an opportunity for people to participate that did not have the opportunity before because they had kids or whatever and could not leave their homes at seven o'clock at night or ten o'clock in, in the morning, leave their job to watch one of these or come to one of these.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to item G. Any agenda items for our next meeting? Hearing none, and if any come up, certainly let us know. Otherwise, I have got nine forty-two.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Yes, Catherine. He's coming down.
Okay. I'll give him the certificate, you sign it and then he takes it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Need a signature there, I guess.
Okay, so he's got a ten o'clock meeting and then he'll go down.
I'll text her.